Live and we are back on Tuesday evening. Hello, hello guys. How are you today?
Doing great.
Great, great. What about you, LaDonna?
I am super excited about tonight. You know, anytime we're talking about voting and getting people elected, I'm gonna be working my double hardest best to get that going.
I know. I saw you out there working the polls yesterday and today. I didn't see you today. I was out there today a little bit.
Yes, I had to work, but I was working my phone though. I still worked my jelly. I got twenty people out there without me even being there. So I think I did exceptionally well.
Yes, it's very important that we get out and vote. And it is very important, very, very, very important that we get out and vote on this runoff race for mayor of Beaumont. So we've got a guest tonight, Owen Samuel, the Beaumont City Council of War III will be with us. LaDonna, did you get him connected correctly?
He's working on it.
He's working on it. Alright, he'll be with us in a few minutes. So in that time, we'll just move on with our program and when he pops in, we'll be ready to go. How about that? We'll be, we're talking about voting and what the importance of voting in this race and it's very important that we get out and vote and if you can, grab a few people with you and take them out to vote. How about that?
It's not just this election. So let me just, let's just chit chat. We got a little chit chat. It's not just this election because you know what I've been hearing a lot of people say, oh, you want everybody in uproar about the mayoral election. I'm not just in an uproar about the mayoral election. I'm in an uproar about all elections, okay? I'm in an uproar about exercising your civic duty and exercising your right to vote at every level and often. And I will say this, practice doesn't make perfect, practice makes permanent. So if we practice voting, it will become a permanent practice in which we get out and vote at every election at every level and we will know that it's not just a one-time thing. It's not just the mayoral thing. It's not just a city council thing. It's not just a presidential thing. It's a anytime that there's an opportunity to exercise your right. It's a all-the-time thing. It's an every-time thing. No election should you sit out. No election should you stay home. No, let me say this. Somebody said it best the other day. A boatless people is a hopeless people.
You're right. You're absolutely correct. And you know, the local voting is more just as important as a national. Now, like, right, right. So right now, this is more important than anything. And not just this focus, but like you said, a mayor's election. What really counts is when twenty-two, we get ready to replace these judges and commissioners and county commissioners.
And DAs.
And DAs. Definitely DA to DA. Okay, so don't get me started. That's for another show. I'm just waiting on that time.
Right. So we're not just worried about the mayoral election. I want people to let them know it's bigger than that. We talk about twenty-two. We talk about twenty-four. We talk about anytime they got one, we want to see you.
Right. We, we talk about bigger things. You know, we, they playing chess, that chess, we want to play chess with them. We're not gonna play, we're not gonna play checkers while they playing chess. We're gonna play hard. We're gonna get on top of this like we need to. So that's why it's so important to vote. Again, it's very important to vote early than, I mean, not, yeah, I'm sorry. It's good to vote early and it's very important to vote early in this race.
Yes, and not just early, but often, all the time.
All the time. Yes, right. And, and again, I'll say it again. I repeat myself, local voting is more important than the national. We've got to do it right here, down here. That's where it starts. That's where it's important. Alright? Okay, I want to give a good big shout out to Marion George Moore. She's with us this evening. Hello, Marion. Good to have you as a guest. I mean, as a listener, watcher. So we'd like to have you on. Like, thank you for stopping by. So we'll be back right after our intro and with our special guest, City Councilman for War III, Owen Samuel. And we'll be right back. Welcome to Knowledge is Power Podcast Live with your host, Tony Red Pearl, and my co-host, LaDonna Sherwood and Francis Lockins.
Knowledge is Power Podcast Live starts now.
Are we ready? Alright, there we go. Hello, Mr. Samuel.
Good evening.
How you doing, my brother? How are you today?
Man, every day is a good day.
I hear you. I hear you. Now, Donna, your mic is just fine, sweetie. It's not, it's not too loud.
Okay.
But even though you know you can talk pretty loud. Okay, but and also we have our co-supporting co-host, Francis Lockin. Hello, Francis. You still there with us?
I'm here.
We never get a chance to see her live. We don't understand.
Hi. Too many jobs. Too many jobs.
Yes, so we are here with our guest, Beaumont City Councilman of War III, Owen Samuel. We just waiting to get his bike together so we can get a good look at him.
Yeah, my bad. It's about to go low. I didn't need to run out of juice, so.
Alright, you've got it charged up. Okay, you got a charger on it. Okay, great. We're talking about, tonight, we're gonna, we're talking about election. And of course, we had a great show last Sunday night and it was about voter suppression and how is it important for us to vote in this, it's just a mayor's race and runoff. So again, Knowledge is Power Podcast do not endorse a candidate, but our guest sure can. So anyway, taking away, Edwin. How's everything going, babe?
Man, it's a good day. It's a good day. I'm happy to be here.
Great to have you. Great to have you. One of the largest audience in Southeast Texas right here. So we're glad to have you.
Absolutely. You better tell them, Tony, how many viewership we have and every time they say that our viewership is not good, guess what we do? We kick it up a notch.
We're gonna take it up a whole lot pretty soon.
Let me tell them about Knowledge is Power Podcast, what we get all the going. Knowledge is Power Podcast Live is a platform to share important information by educating Southeast Texas African-American communities with valuable information on health, education, finances, politics, and business. And we pride ourselves, honey, on keeping our hand on the pulse of this community and letting you know what is going on in and around the Golden Triangle. Tonight, we have no other than our councilman, Mr. Edwin Samuel, and he's just gonna talk to us a bit about the gravity of this election, the way this election can shape our future, and a little bit about the history of how long it's been since we've had a majority on council that kind of actually reflects the demographics of the community, which oftentimes, I'm not gonna say I'm not a historian, we haven't had here locally in the city of Beaumont. And what that actually means, what is the four votes and having a majority on council, what does that mean? How can that affect the future of Beaumont? And just the overall gravity of this particular mayoral runoff. And we're excited to have him here because he's a wealth of knowledge.
Well, thank you. Yes, this is a very unique time in history. For the first time in history, in the history of Beaumont, we can have a council that truly reflects the demographics of Beaumont. The majority population in Beaumont is though that of minorities. And right now, we, it's three minority representatives on council and there's an opportunity for there to be four, which would give us the majority on council. And it's never happened before. And then there's another historic moment that could be in the making. This could be the first time in the history of Beaumont that there's been a black female as the mayor leading our city. So this is very historic and it's, it's time. It's time. So we have to be about the business. It's not over. The elections are not over. This is not over. The struggle is not over. And we have to take advantage of the opportunities as they are presented to us. We have to be prepared for these opportunities so that we can take advantage of them.
Right, and I would add that we cannot take this opportunity for granted and we cannot sit this one out. We don't have the option of saying, my candidate didn't win, didn't make the runoff, so I'm not voting. Who I selected is not the option, so I'm not voting. You know, I think at this particular moment, we have to take a step back and say, if for no other reason and purpose, the majority of Beaumont is African-American and we have a rich history in trying to gain the franchise, trying to get to an opportunity to have a voice. And when the opportunity is here to have it, how we must seize the moment.
Yes, I, I agree with you wholeheartedly. But you know, I'm trying not to look at this from a racial standpoint or ethnic standpoint. I'm trying to look at this in the form of having true equity. You know, it's one thing to have equality, to have equal shares, but equal shares doesn't reflect the population.
Right. Same, right.
We, we have an opportunity to have equitable equity in our community. The oldest areas of our city are those areas that are predominantly black. And because of that, that means the older areas of the city needs the most attention. But if you have a majority-minority, then they're not concerned about equity, but it's more about equality. So that's, that's what we're dealing with now. That's the difference between three votes and four votes.
Break it down. That's all we got you tonight.
Yeah, so that's what we have to do. If, if we're, you know, right now, we're dealing with the issue on, on, on our, on the Beaumont Council whereby there's one member that wants to do economic development in an area of town that, and trying to get infrastructure, to build new infrastructure in the west end of Beaumont for sake of economic development and development for his particular war. But the price tag that goes along with that will take up, I mean, that could totally change the face of our community because we have the older streets, we have the oldest water and sewer lines. And to get equal money going to each ward is not equitable. So that's what, that's the message I'm trying to get. We, we want equity. We, we want our equal share, but it has to be equitable equal shares. If it's not equitable, then there's a problem. So we have an opportunity and this thing is bigger than me. This thing is bigger than you. It's bigger than any of us out here. It's bigger than Robin, the candidate for mayor. Because right now, we have an opportunity to do the right thing and put our community first. It's not about me. It's not about Robin. It's about our community. And if we want to have equity in our community, then we're gonna have to participate in the process and we're gonna have to get out there and we're gonna have to go vote. If someone's upset with me or anybody else and say, I'm not voting in this election, that's a vote for the other, for the other side.
Right. Mr. Samuel, can you reiterate to our audience, and we often talk about the power of four, can you reiterate and kind of dive in a bit about the reason for the power of four? Why so important?
Yes, the power of four is important because, one, in order to get anything to be considered by the council, it takes a motion and a second. Once you get a motion and a second, then it goes to the floor for a vote. And with, when it goes to the floor for a vote, the majority rules. And we have seven members on council. All seven members vote. So the majority out of seven is four. So if we have four votes, and it's not, it's, I'm not saying there were always that we all would be on the same page because we are the same color. That's not what I'm saying. But we've had a, a background, a history that is similar. We live in a community in which those individuals that have the needs, we can identify with them because we've lived life through the lens in which they see things.
Right.
So four votes, four votes, and it goes. It passed.
And then I would like you to kind of speak to what the challenges have been without the four votes because people such as Robin and even yourself have run into backlash of other folks suggesting that they're not working or you guys haven't been working hard. But the power of that four votes, which you explained and breaking down, you have two to bring it, but it take four to pass it. These things have affected and limited your ability to do certain things. This is why we need a history lesson to understand, well, why would we elect somebody who, you know, what, what the naysayers are saying that haven't done this X, Y, X, Y, well, how are they gonna do it if you don't understand the nature of the council they were on?
Yeah, well, you're absolutely correct. If it were only three of us and say the, it deals with a different, an area of town. There could be times when the vote that we need would be fearful of voting along with us because of the constituency that they represent and their fear that the, the media will take them wrong, portray them wrong. Or the media could attack them and cause their base to diminish and cause them to lose support of their base. Those are the things that, that happen every day. And that's why sometimes, even if, if a brother of another color wants to vote because they feel the right thing to do is to create equitable actions, they may be afraid to do that which is equitable and say, well, I'm gonna do what's equal. And that's the way that it goes. If they have the four votes and the three of us on the same page, we still lose. So that's, that's what we're dealing with. And now I've seen times when majorities have taken advantage of that advantage that they have and just shoved things down people's throats. That's not what I feel is the thing to do. We have to be considerate about how it impacts all areas of our community because I don't represent just the black community of Beaumont. I represent the city of Beaumont in addition to my war. So I can't expect my war to be the best that it can be if I'm not trying to make Beaumont the best it can be. And that's what many people don't really understand. So that's why, that's the difference between a majority and being in the minority.
Let me ask you a question. What do you think is the greatest challenge causing people not to vote? Because Beaumont has a lot of registered voters that, not only in local elections, but in just elections in general, they don't turn out well. I mean, you know, from your standpoint, tenure and just being on council and representing people and talking to people and, you know, having relationships with people, what do you think is causing the low voter turnout?
Because they feel that there's no direct impact on them. If it's not on my front porch, then it really doesn't matter. You know, yeah, yeah, I'd like to vote. I'd like to do that, but really, it's not gonna impact me. And they don't realize that many of the decisions that's made at City Hall indirectly impacts them. And I believe that's why we see the voter apathy because they can't, many of us can't see how their elected representatives impact them on a daily basis. Taxes, sales taxes, property taxes, fees, water bills, light bills, all these things, daycares, grocery stores in their neighborhoods, good food, all of that impacts them every day, but they may not realize. My crickets.
You're, you're right. You're right. They, they don't realize how important it is that one vote from them that counts. You know, that's why we always say every vote counts.
This is where the rubber meets the road.
Right.
It's not in Washington DC. It's not in Austin, Texas. The rubber meets the road right here. When we can't, when we can't get nets put up in the park or can't get goals or they take down the goals in our neighborhoods because they could be, well, because some, the majority could care less about our children having a basketball court that's covered out of the rain so that they can go down the street to go to the park and while mom is still at work and feel safe. So those are, those are the things that we, we have to understand that we, we do have an impact on how those things happen.
Well, how do you think we, as a community, could bridge that gap? That gap of them not knowing, the information is there. The city council meetings are posted online. Even with some of the organizations here in our community, which are opening, opened and welcome to everyone. I mean, all they have to do is actually seek the information. How do we, what is an incentive for them to somehow, you know, get the information or want to seek the information that's out there that will help them to understand? Do we need to implement it at church?
Well, there was a time that churches had a strong impact on the household. It has to start at home. I mean, we, we have to make, make sure our children understand how their actions impact the community around them or how their lack of actions impact the community around them. That's when, when I was coming, well, now I'm telling my age, but when I was coming up, you know, my parents made sure I understood what it meant to be a black man in America. And they would, I had teachers at my school that cared and wanted to make sure I understood and learned the lessons of life along with the lessons that were in the textbook.
Right.
And I think it kind of goes back to what I was saying in the beginning. We've got to make a practice of voting. We've got to make a practice of introducing our kids and our friends and our family to voting, you know? The, the one reaches seven challenge and all of those things are just a way for you to make a decision and to help others around you make a decision. Everybody's got to reach somebody else. You can't just say, well, I voted. I could go and vote, but how would that help me? I made a whole, I'm making a whole day, week, all the way to Juneteenth campaign out of getting people to the voting polls, particularly young people, to let them know this is something you should do. This is something that's cool. This is something you should participate in. This is something that maybe nobody else is telling you to do, but I'm telling you to do it. I'm telling you that I think it should be done. I'm telling you that I think it would be beneficial and it would be fun and it would be exciting and ultimately it can affect you and ultimately can affect your family and people that are of working age, people that are gonna be buying cars and gonna be buying houses and gonna have kids. This is something that you have to take an initiative in, you know? And, and he's right, you know, we gotta start with the younger people. We gotta get younger people involved in what it means to go vote and why you should vote.
But you know, one of the things we're gonna have to do, we're gonna have to make sure we get our young people to understand this and we have to understand it can't be done in one day.
No, no.
Okay, we can't wait until the week before an election to start talking about voting. We can't wait till the month before vote, uh, the election to start talking about voting. We can't wait three months before the election and start talking about voting. We need to be talking about voting every day. Because right now, it's too, if we hadn't put in the sweat now, it's too late.
Right.
You know, it's like thinking you can go to the Super Bowl and hadn't been going to practice all year. But you wait till the, the month before Super Bowl to start going to practice and trying to lift weights, trying to get ready for the game. You gotta get ready for, you gotta get ready for the game long before the season starts.
Yes, sir. You're absolutely right. I'm encouraging all my new graduates. If you got a driver's license, nine times out of ten, you're registered to vote. Another rite of passage aside from crossing the stage is your rite of passage to vote. Come on out. It's a special, you graduated, now you make your first grown-up executive decision to come out to the polls and vote. That'd be one of the first things that you do now that you're an adult. Let's go. We want to see you at the polls and we want to make that a practice.
LaDonna, one of the things we have to make sure we get, not just the young people, but the middle-aged and the old people to understand. We, we have to start doing, getting ready for the next election right now. We have to get ready for the next election, election. The day after this election is over.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. We, we, we mentioned that at the beginning of the podcast this evening. That's one of the things we say that we got to be ready for twenty-two right now.
Yeah, we have to organize our community.
Right now.
We start, we have to begin to divide our community up so that every, it's not gonna be left on, up to a handful of people to work our community. We should be able to work each community, north end, south end, Parachute, South Park. They should all be organized before elections come so that we can work on the same, on the same page.
Right, absolutely.
That's right. You're absolutely correct.
Because we need, all the deltas ought to know the AKs and the Qs and they should know all the Knights of Peter Claver and Paradise Baptist Church, Antioch Baptist Church. All of these entities should be organizing themselves to be a part of a total unit.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely.
We have to be one.
That's right.
One band, one sound.
Because the other side is already prepared.
Well, they're not as prepared as you might think, but we're not prepared.
No, we're not. No, we're not.
Yeah.
You know, uh, that was a time that you knew everybody on your street.
Right.
You knew your next door neighbors.
Right.
And if you just took your, your, the street in front of you and the street behind you. There was somebody that could go to each one of those houses and make sure they go on the vote.
Mm-hmm.
They would know the phone number, they could call. That's what they did back in the day.
Absolutely.
But that's when voting was important. That's when the right to vote may cost you some blood.
Right.
Right.
Along with some sweat and some tears.
And money.
And money.
That's right.
It wasn't given, it wasn't given to them.
That's right.
But.
Our ancestors took water hose, had to accept water hose, the dolls.
Studing line.
Life sticks, you know?
Yeah.
Uh, to, to vote, to wanna vote, and we take, we took voting for granted. And they, this is why we have it as voter suppression right now. If we did, if they did not know how important we are together and, and voting, they wouldn't be trying to stop us from voting.
Absolutely, that is about to sign, Texas was.
Oh, oh, it ain't over, it ain't over.
No.
Governor, we have a governor that, if you thought, you think Trump was bad? Oh, I'm not supposed to say that though.
Let me say this, George Bush won Texas by twenty percentage points back when he ran. Trump only won it by five. Joseph was telling us this the other night, they sweep the blue ink of Texas and they're not gonna let that happen.
Well, I do know Governor Abbott.
You talking about Hot Wheels?
Oh, Lord.
Tony, you know what, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a mute your mic.
Yeah, well, I'll just tell it like it is. Go ahead, oh, yeah.
Redrow, okay, yeah, our governor. Uh, if we don't wake up, they gonna wake us up.
Uh, oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
I don't have to have another Trump in office for me to understand. And I hope you all don't have to have a Governor Abbott to understand what's going on.
Honey, I think that this has been a very impactful conversation and one that's very necessary. And I'm looking forward to, uh, just encouraging people. You know, just trying to encourage them and just trying to press upon their heart. The importance in every vote is a voice and your voice matters.
May I say one other thing, Ladonna?
Sure.
Uh, Tony?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm at the courthouse almost every day. I'm watching us going to courthouse, going before judges on benches. And they are distributing justice from their vantage point.
Mm-hmm.
Out of all the district court judges in Jefferson County. How many look like you and me? None.
None, zero.
In the county courts, there, we only have one in the county courts, none in the district courts. I'm not saying that they can't be fair and just. But they don't know what it's like to live in the North End or the South End. They don't know what it's like to have to drive down the streets and fear being stopped because they're driving while they're black. Some of those things, they just don't understand. But what I'm afraid of, we have one county court judge. Elections are coming for the judges.
Yes, sir.
And if you see of all the benches that's open and you see us going for that one bench that we already have.
We shouldn't do it, that's a no-go.
I'm, I'm with you, go ahead, I'm with you.
We keep, we can't keep doing the same thing over and over again.
Right.
And get a different result.
That's right, we need, we need one or two more seats, judge seats that look like us.
But we have to begin to plan and organize right now.
Yes, correctly, I agree, totally agree.
I do too.
So that's it in a nutshell, it's about numbers.
That's right.
Majority rules.
That's right.
Well, luckily for us, we happen to be the majority, we just gotta get our asses in gear and go out there and get it.
Yes, right.
I said what I said.
But.
I, I understand.
You are absolutely correct, Arwin, uh, uh, we need to have people that look like us on the benches. Uh, uh, that's just you could, oh, I can't go too far because I'm, for legal matters, I can't say anymore about this, but it's gonna have to be a change in twenty-two, we gotta get started the day after this election.
Well, I hope people understand that. Uh, and I, you know, they can call me, I've been called racist. Uh, this, that, uh, there's a program in social media, uh, that, that, that station, they say I'm the biggest racist, but it is what it is, I'm ju, I'm just trying to be true. Um, I, I think the battle is not against flesh and blood, but it's against principalities and powers, it's on the inside.
Now.
What's on the inside will come out.
That's right.
At the time.
That's right, the truth will prevail.
That's it, that's it, so, uh, I just tell us, uh, don't, don't get caught sleeping, cuz winter is coming.
Mm-hmm.
Winter is coming.
That's right.
Uh, it may be sunshiny right now, it may be hot outside, but if we don't do what we need to do, we will get caught in the cold.
That's right, and this is a time for us to make a change right now, get this thing started right now. So we want you to go out and vote, we want you to go out in the masses for this runoff race, we want your early voting. This is gonna be very important that we all go out and earn a vote for this mayor, re, um, runoff.
Yeah, uh, vote, go out and vote for Robin Muton for mayor.
That's right.
He has the knowledge, he has the experience and, um, we can make it happen.
Right.
And after this election, if you really wanna get involved and, and I, I ask if there's any, anybody out there that says, oh, that Negro there, uh, he, he just talking outside his neck. If I've done you something that make you believe that that's the way I am, I'm sorry about that, I apologize. But I gotta move on with life and I'm gonna try to do this one more time. I'm gonna try to help organize my community. If you want to help me, if you want to help me, as soon as this election is over, let's get to work. If you don't wanna help me, don't try to hold me back. You either run with me or just get out.
We ran over.
All right, all right, yeah, and you know what, Arwin, I, I applaud you for that, for saying that because it, you have been. And I, I've, I've heard many talks, many negative talk about you, uh, by being a council and never done anything, but and I tried to explain to them is that it's hard for one person on council that looks like us to be able to do anything when they have the majority vote against you. So for the last three, uh, elections, you've had two that look like us that you still couldn't have the majority because the majority was on the other side, all right? So your hands are actually really tied because you cannot get the votes, the majority vote for what you wanna do for your constituents, right?
But I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna use that excuse. God is in control.
Oh, yes, he is, always.
He, he make, he make millions out of opinion.
That's right, but let.
All I, all I gotta do is just keep pushing.
That's right, so let me get back, let me finish this. So now we, now we've got three for the first time on council.
No, we've had three before.
Just never had four.
We've never had four.
That's right.
Three.
Okay, I wasn't living in this area at that time.
Well, cuz there was, uh, Get Right, myself, uh, 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 one at large, Get Right, myself, and Robin. War three, war four, and a, at.
That's right, that's right, absolutely. But this would be the first time that we have a tiebreaker to make it four.
Right.
So now with that majority of a vote, by coming together with, having a majority. You as a councilman can do a lot more for your community.
We can have equity.
That's right, that's what I want to know, right, that's what I want to hear you say. That's what I want to hear you say. Because that is what the force that we can, we can have with that full vote. So people, Beaumont is one hundred and ten years old. And this is the first time that we'll be able to have a majority on the council. And being a majority, we'll be in the, we have our fe, feet in the shoes that we'll be able to walk and do some things that we had never ever had to have an opportunity to do, to, to accomplish. So it's just not the person that, that we're voting for because she's black, she's African American, she's from Beaumont, Texas. She's from a Beaumont, uh, 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 black high school, uh, she lives in a Beaumont black community. Uh, and she's, she's black on black, it's not about just that, it's, it's about and not about the history that we're about to make as being the first black African American uh, female mayor of a city the size of Beaumont. But it's the majority that counts.
Yep.
And I would just add that ultimately, get out and vote. Like whatever, you got an opportunity to vote, get out and vote. We not, the show doesn't endorse anybody, we can't, we not, we ain't gonna say that, but what we will say is that you should vote. You should definitely do that, you should definitely not sit this one out, you should definitely exercise your right to vote. You should definitely decide what you want, what you want for the future of Beaumont, what you think would be best for the future of Beaumont. And if you don't vote, then don't say nothing. We don't, like, I don't wanna hear nobody on my timeline that have not sent me that sticker, but not tell me nothing about what's going on in Beaumont, what they don't have in Beaumont.
And let me add.
I'm, I can't go out in downtown Niston, the, the sewage dam. I better not see nobody on my timeline who I don't have their sticker.
Well, let me add.
Nothing you think about the, what's going on in Beaumont.
Literally, it literally took five minutes. I mean, when I tell you there is only one portion, when you go in there to your station, there is one. So all you have to do is go in there and push the button, maybe three times, maybe four. But you're in, and I mean, you are in and you're out, it is very.
Three minutes, I timed it, it was under three minutes.
I mean, I walked right in.
To the time I made my way out, it was under.
I mean, you, there is no hassle.
You don't have to even study.
There is no hassle, you don't have to figure out and get tired or frustrated with what you don't know, there is one, one option.
That's it.
One question, two options.
And we already know which one we want to.
Absolutely, so, I mean, it's, it's painless.
Yes, so, uh, uh, my folks in Beaumont, Texas, this is an opportunity for us. And this is an opportunity for my good friend, Arwin Samuel.
It ain't over.
It ain't over, it ain't over, hey, hey, Arwin, show me your T-shirts, man, you got some T-shirts that you're, you're pushing, you got any rounds they, they can see?
I don't have them with me.
Oh, my.
They in the car.
And let me say this, I just wanna say one more thing before we close it out. People were saying that it's a negative connotation for it to be on Juneteenth and it's negative and it's this and it's that, and I don't believe that.
I don't believe that.
I don't believe that it's a negative thing.
Was it ordained, let's just put that out there. Was it ordained, just put it out there.
I think that what the, the symbolism of it being on Juneteenth is just what Arwin was saying, our ancestors are with us, honey. And guess what, we cannot lose, another thing is, you know, uh, we're resilient people, baby, we can't fail anyhow. It's gonna work out some way somehow, I believe it.
Forgive us our debts as we forgive our debtors, let's put this behind, let's move on, it ain't over.
It's not over.
Over till it's over.
Come on, Brenda.
That's right.
Come on, Brenda.
And it's over when we can't breathe no more.
That's right, it, it's not over, my long shot.
No, sir, no, sir, so we gotta keep pushing.
That's right, we gotta keep pushing, cuz keep pushing.
And Juneteenth is a beautiful day to vote, I think it's a beautiful day to vote and exercise your freedoms, honey, all of them.
That's right, thank y'all for inviting me on, I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you, it's always good to hear y'all.
It's good, it's good to have you as well, uh, we, 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 we're here to do the fighting, we do, we're here to fight for our community and the people in our community, this is all about love, you know, we've had, we've got so much hate. And, and, and we forget, we forget about love, you know?
Yeah.
There's so much unforgiveness, don't throw that in there, we got to forgive, Jesus.
But where's the love? God is love, God, love is God, where, where is, people, let's come together and do the right thing. We need you to vote, we need you to vote. And we thank you, Mr. Samuel, for stopping in with us and giving your endorsement to your candidate, uh, Robin, uh, Muton uh, for mayor and, uh, we, we, we behind you, we, we just hoping everything works out. And, and just, just, we all in, how about that?
It ain't over.
Oh, he said it, he said it over. A good big shout out to Tony Prado, hey, Tony, uh, Sherri Perkins, uh, let's see, uh, Brenda Davis, Perry Busby. Uh, that's who has been around here that was with us this evening, Lillian Brown was with us, she said hello. Uh, let's go here and see if there's any more that with us, uh, yes, Anita Kaufman said, oh.
And I will have some shirts, cuz it's not over even after this election.
That's right.
Over will continue.
That's right.
Be a part of the it ain't over movement, let me know, we got shirts.
That's right, we got shirts and we, in, in other words, it's not over.
It ain't over.
It is over, you know?
It ain't never over, we gotta keep pushing.
Uh, that's right, so early voting, uh, has started, started yesterday, the seventh, and it's on till the fifteenth. We want everybody out to the polls and vote, please, uh, and.
Eight to five.
Eight to five.
And then the fourteenth and fifteenth is seven to seven, and then election day is Juneteenth, okay? Let's be clear, I wanna be clear on that.
That's right, so, keep doing what you're doing, uh, and let's get it on, let's make it happen.
It's not over.
As he says, that old, Francis, you can close us out, sweetheart.
Well, thank you. Oh, you're welcome, thank you guys once again, and we enjoyed having you, Mr. Samuel, it's always a pleasure. And join us for our next podcast, when is it, Sunday, Sunday?
Sunday, that's right, Sunday will be our, our la, our next podcast, so we'll, we'll have everybody on, okay? Thank you, everybody, God bless you, we see you, we see you Sunday.
Thank you for watching Knowledge is Power Podcast Live. Be sure to like and subscribe to all Knowledge is Power social media pages.